The Newton's zoning board of adjustments meeting will start at 7:00 P. M. Jim, would you take a roll call, please?
Mr. Kozak?
Here.
Mr. Hamel?
Present.
Mr. Sylvia?
Here.
Ms. Reardon?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here.
Please stand for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just so the rest of the board knows, Mr. Sylvia is now a voting member of the board.
A full member.
Full member of the board.
Full regular member.
When did you go in and get sworn in, yesterday?
Yesterday.
Thank you, okay. So we need to elect a...
Mr. Chairman, would you like to put in Ms. Reardon for...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yeah, to make it... Ms. Reardon will be a voting member this evening. And Ms. White? I'll say Jim, okay. We need a vice chair.
Just the point of order.
Yes, sir.
Only the regular members get to vote for officers of the board. Even though the alternates are voting members for other things, for officers, it's only the regular members who vote.
I guess I was aware of that, just didn't think of it. So anyway, for the number one thing, we need to nominate somebody for vice chair.
So I would nominate John Sylvia for vice chair.
I second that. John, do you want to accept?
Absolutely.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay. Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvia?
Aye.
Mr. Kozak?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Next, we're going to look at 125 development request.
There's one more.
Which, oh, excuse me, move to authorize... Oh, yeah, I'm sorry about that. This is something I really didn't realize, so Jim and I talked. But move to authorize the vice chair to sign in the absence of the chair.
Actually, that's in the rules.
I realize this, however...
We could do it inside...
It's cleaner if you do it than if you don't.
Okay. We're gonna... Continue, Jack.
Yeah, someone second a motion, please. Any discussion? Jim, would you roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvia?
Aye.
Mr. Sorry, Ms. White?
Here, yes, sorry.
Ms. Reardon?
Aye.
And Mr. Kozak?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Motion carries. Move on for the rehearing request.
Mr. Chairman, I will recuse myself for this item.
Okay. Thank you. So anyway, this is a request from 125 Development to, for a rehearing on Tax Act 14, Block 1, Laws 2, and 1 in 1. And everybody read the letter? Jim, this letter went out to everyone from the, from Byrne and Stern?
It's gotta be an email. I gotta be a email.
Yes, I got it.
Does anybody have any questions? I, Jim has read it several times, I have, and I see no reason why we shouldn't have Is there any discussion, any questions?
Yeah, absolutely. Reading through this, it seems that by issuing a no decision, the way I read through this, it was a burden by us issuing a no decision when we thought that we were doing them a favor.
Yeah, we, Jim and I talked about it before then, and we kind of thought that we would give them a chance to really change the whole plans and so forth, to come back something and maybe even go back to the planning board and start over again, but that didn't work out, as you can see.
Okay. So I guess my, and just to clarify, I know there was some emails that went back and forth. It was, a rehearing is just that, a rehearing of the, what's already been heard?
That is correct.
And there's, are we to expect new anything? Or it's just the materials that we already had?
Just the materials we already have, they can't...
Unless anything has physically changed since then.
Meaning?
If, say, something changed in the statutes.
Okay.
You know, zoning changed. Or if anything physically on the property...
Oil was bound.
There's an earthquake, and suddenly that land is up 10 feet, and suddenly drains differently, you know? So by acknowledging that, Jim, it seems like the definition of workforce housing changed recently? Is that correct?
No, it did not.
There was something that came out of the... Forgive me, because I don't have the emails in front of me. From, what has changed regarding workforce housing is, I believe it's starting in January of 2023. Any special articles in zoning that pertain to elderly or age-restricted housing must also be applied to that unless you have workforce housing ordinances in place. Okay. I knew there was something.
Yeah.
But if that doesn't take place till January, and we're doing a rehearing now, does that constitute new information? No, because the... Because we're voting now and not in January. We presently have senior housing availability, all of which is based on the requirements for residential A and cluster developments.
Okay.
So we have no, there's no special benefit. You don't get to put twice the density because it's senior housing versus regular housing. It does allow you to cluster, but that's part of the cluster zoning aspect of zoning. There's no incentives in town, and it specifically excludes workforce housing from being... We presently have an impact fee that the senior housing does not pay because that is a school-based fee. You cannot waive that for workforce housing, and that is actually spelled out in the law I mean, the town has the ability, you know, the selectmen can waive fees, but that can, that's not something that would normally be a part of workforce housing.
The thing that I'd be concerned about is if they change the plans, physically change them, and we can't accept them.
If they physically change the plans, then they are no longer in compliance with the application.
That is correct, so...
Then it becomes a new application versus a rehearing.
Yeah. So I'm hoping that when we get the new set of plans, or when their plans are in there, we're going to deal with it. You and I will spend a couple of minutes looking it over very closely.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are we, do we have the ability to request... When do they typically have to have this information in front of us currently? Usually, a minimum of 10 days prior.
Right, to the meeting.
Do we have the ability to request?
Earlier.
Earlier? Without opening ourselves up?
We could, I don't think they'd have to follow it. Jim, do you agree?
I quite honestly am not certain what...
Yeah.
They would do. Normally, what a rehearing is basically, you're almost starting from scratch. You're taking all the original evidence, you're redoing the public notice, the about our notices, everything as if it were a new application. However, you're using...
Existing material.
The existing evidence. So we have the existing evidence, so realistically, they're not going to supply us with new evidence? They're not going to supply us with the evidence because we still have it on file? Right, because it's the evidence already on file. They have to supply fresh copies because people don't necessarily retain paperwork afterwards. However, you know, there's an applicant, there's a rehearing application fee. What you're doing tonight is granting them that the board will rehear the issue on a date specific with the specific parameters of what you will be rehearing. They're claiming that because there was no decision made, that while that benefited the client in that he could then go seek other channels. The rehearing is review of the original evidence, the same process of finding fact and responding to criteria. And the difference is now if it's granted, good for the applicant; if it's denied, then it's denied. Then if they have any problem, they can, they have to go to court. And they cannot bring that plan back because you only get one bite of the, well, in this case, you get two bites of the apple. But usually, once something has been denied, that plan has to change substantially in order to be brought back before the ZBA.
Well, in the, in the letter from the lawyer, he states here, "At the rehearing," and I think we've already, I just started to read it out loud, "at the rehearing, my client will present additional evidence in his hopeful it can address some of the board concerns expressed at the original hearing." And we'll have to wait and see.
Well, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, I think they can supply additional evidence if it wasn't readily available at the time. It wasn't available at the time.
That is correct, yeah. But not to change the plans at all. They have to be exactly as they were.
I'm all for a rehearing, I'm fine with that personally.
I am also, yeah.
I would just like...
Yes, Ms. Reardon.
Sorry.
I just have a question, since I wasn't an alternate when the original plan was put before the board. Are you saying that they'll give another set of plans? Because quite frankly, I'm going blind trying to read those PDFs on my TV screen and figure out what's what.
Oh, no, you will get a, you will get a lot, both size plans.
Okay.
And they should be identical to the original ones that they submitted.
Well, okay.
So I guess my only concern with a rehearing is I'm concerned that 10 days is a very short time for all of that information. Just knowing how many times I sat in on the other side of this table when they were here, obviously, I would hope that it's a little bit more concise this time around because it was definitely not very concise from sitting over there. But so, I mean, that's really my only concern, I think that's a lot to review in 10 days. Aside from that, I, you know, obviously, it can be done.
Again, Jim, would you try to send them a note or something? Maybe we can get it.
I will send to Berns and Stein, I believe is the name of the attorney. A notice tomorrow.
Okay.
That the board has granted a rehearing and any parameters that they've set for.
Yeah. And yeah, just so we get it, get it earlier, that's all.
The board would like, if you could... Normally, because people always ask me what date, I looked it up in advance. Noon on September 26 would be the normal date that you would ask for paperwork to be in.
That would be the normal day?
Uh...
And what is the date in October for the new hearing?
The new hearing, the new hearing would be on October 5.
Okay. Yeah. If you look at it, really not a lot of time.
If you, if the board wishes to back that up. What I don't want to do is, I don't want to be pushy and poke the bear, so to say. But it would be nice to review, and this rehearing is completely starting over, meaning we have a preliminary, and then we have a public... Right, so what, on... Okay. So October 5, you would have the preliminary review.
Yep.
And then on, where you could ask questions, what have you, regarding the documents. And then you would post the public hearing for...
The following month. Whatever it is, November, yeah.
Yeah, that would be November 7. 31 plus carry the 2.
November 2nd.
November...
2nd.
2nd.
According to a calendar.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I think that alleviated my concern a little bit because essentially, that's going to give us a month and 10 days. So... Remember, starting as of a couple of weeks ago, you have 90 days start to finish.
Right.
But we can grant an extension if all parties mutually agree. They can request an extension, you cannot. Well, you can as long as they...
They accept it, yeah. Okay. Someone like to make a motion that we do the rehearing for 125 Development?
I'll motion to have a rehearing.
Is there any discussion? Well, a second, please.
A second.
Okay, you have a second, Ms. Reardon. Any discussion? Barbara, are you in, on?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Barbara?
I do not.
Okay. Are we all set? Jim, would you just take a roll call vote, please?
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvia?
Aye.
Ms. Reardon?
Aye.
Mr. Kozak?
I have a question.
Okay, they have a second motion they have to make.
Okay, I was gonna say, have you set the date for the preliminary hearing?
That's the next motion.
Somebody want to make a motion to pick the date of the rehearing, October 5, 2022?
Make a motion to have the rehearing on October 5, 2022. For the preliminary review with all paperwork submitted to the board by noon on September 26, 2022. For the review of all paperwork submitted to the board by September 26, 2022.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Jim, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvia?
Aye.
Mr. Kozak?
Aye.
Ms. Reardon?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Mr. Hamel, do you have a question?
No, that wasn't a question.
Okay, yeah. All right, the next on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes of 8:3.
Do we need to note that, Mr.?
Pardon me?
Do we need to note that Mr. Hamel is now back sitting?
Mr. Hamel is now taken a seat as a member of the board.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes of August 3 as presented.
Okay. Want to hear a second, please?
Mrs. Barbara, second.
Oh, she, I'm sorry, what did she say?
Ms. White seconded.
Okay, she did. Are there any changes, any questions? Jim, would you roll call vote, please?
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvia?
Aye.
Ms. Reardon?
Aye.
Mr. Kozak?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Has everybody had a chance to look at the ESCO account?
I will tell you, the manifest was corrected, Excel failed me. The actual amount is $116.45.
Okay.
Move page.
A second. You have a second, any questions? Roll call vote, Jim?
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvia?
Aye.
Ms. Reardon?
Aye.
Mr. Kozak?
Aye. 2023 budget. Any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I, the only changes that have been made is for the salary. I assume, Jim, you calculated that to take care of our salary needs.
Actually, what that is, is I have, I showed the chair, I have actually been recording my hourly, my number of hours per week since I took over the position, and that calculates basically what it should be next year.
If that includes a potential increase, your average hours with a...
I added to it, we may have to, or you may have to find some money elsewhere in the budget to cover a couple of things.
My other question is on legal.
On what?
On legal.
Okay.
We, you flat budgeted it, but I think that from our experience is, we have had questions that we needed to get responses from our legal counsel. And I mean, in years past, we depended a lot on NHMA's legal.
Yes.
But I think that we're, we'd be better served by using our own counsel who, because I mean, NHMA can give us general guidance, but it's not legal counsel. And I don't know if, I'm inclined to think we should increase that line item to cover being able to seek some counsel on some issues as they come up.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to move it to at least 2,000. What do you think?
That, that sounds like a better choice.
Yeah, I've always thought that.
I mean, we may get some pushback from the selectmen, but I mean, I think it's...
I think it's a modest number, 2,000.
Yeah, and I mean, it is really our responsibility to tell the selectmen what it costs to effectively run this board.
Yes.
So I mean, you know, they can push back on it, but we've got to be able to tell them, this is what it really costs us to do a professional job at what we're asked to do.
I will tell you that whenever possible, I shift the cost for a legal opinion to the applicants.
You do.
Yeah, because that is professional service, just like if we have an engineer kind of thing. But I think some of the, some of our questions are more for our benefit than the applicants.
But those, I always start with the NHMA just because it's free.
Mm-hmm.
And I... I'm cheap, what can I say?
You know, excuse me, the webinar they had with the laws that were just passed, some went into effect on August 23rd, some go into effect next year. There is a piece in there about findings of fact.
Yeah.
That has to go on every decision, and they, as I read it, they were pretty much saying you need to get your legal counsel involved in a lot of that kind of stuff. So that may be another reason to put through the, you know, in front of the selectmen.
You may, if it's a very convoluted process, however, most of your findings of fact are going to be directly tied into, like on a variance, directly tied into a criteria. They did not meet this criteria because...
I found my copy.
That is, most findings of fact, the board can do. There may, there may be issues that come, that crop up here and there where your finding of fact is so convoluted that it has to be, you need somebody who really speaks legalese to be able to write it out. However, that cost can be shifted to an applicant.
I was just, as I read that, it sounded to me like that was something, they were, something additional that they were, we were required to add to the decision.
Actually, the ZBA has been doing a very good job of doing that in a de facto manner. They haven't been calling it finding fact, but various members have actually made specific comments to why they voted in favor of it meeting a criteria or why they don't believe it met a criteria. And those are the places where you actually find fact. And Jim's done a great job prompting. If you get into something like an administrative decision that you're going, that you've been asked to, to hear and possibly overturn, that's going to be like a full-blown courtroom. You're going to have their attorneys present, however, those come up. I look, Newton, the Newton's ZBA has never had a request, somebody challenging an administrator.
Okay, I just, it just...
Yeah. However, increasing it to that does give you nine hours of legal time.
I think it's a good idea to change it to 2,000. One of the questions that I have, Jim, and it was, I think it was, maybe it was the hearing on this here, when, when the client or the applicant hired someone to do a, we commented that the, that the trailers or whatever they're going to, was going to affect Sergeant Woods' values, and they come up with a supposedly a professional. We need to put some money in for those type of things, I believe.
Actually, you may hire any expert you choose to and bill the client, bill the applicant.
Didn't know that, that's fine, thank you.
You need something reviewed by town engineer? If there's not enough in their ESCO account, I will warn you. At the meeting, you can look at the client and say, we need this reviewed by the town engineer, this is approximately what it will cost, we, before we can go any further, you must deposit that in here. Refusal to do that is grounds for automatic denial.
Because we would then lack the information that we require.
Exactly.
Well, you know, because I've happened, because when they, when Coleman's group brought it up, they're trauma, they could talk to whoever, the engineer said that they had hired someone to, and found there was no, no...
That is statutorily permitted, it's just like you hired, you hired me, you can hire...
You know, we look at some of those plans, and there's water all over the place. You know, we never have anybody in here from the conservation department, you know, that, that group, whatever, that, I hope that we could try to get somebody from conservation, the chair or whatever, to come, especially with some of the stuff that Coleman comes up with.
That's nice, however, conservation doesn't cost you anything.
Right, I know, yeah.
But if you decided that you need, you wanted a hydrological, hydrological study... But if you decided that you need, you wanted a hydrological, hydrological study done because you have an issue, you get to pick your own hydrogeologist and hire them, and literally the bill goes to the applicant.
The, the only caveat to that is if we hire an engineer and planning board hire, we, we, the planning board and the zoning board can't each hire different engineers to do the job. They only get, they only, we, we have to share with the planning board for the kinds of studies that we need.
Right. The, the town does have a town engineer.
Okay.
And that is, that is the request.
I think to Mr. Hamel's point, I think that's why we have a crossover member on both boards to kind of help us navigate situations like that.
Ms. McCarthy's on Conservation.
Just in terms of two different engineers and requirements.
So, we need a, a, a motion to, to change the draft budget.
Actually, you can make a motion to adopt it with your correction.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, to adopt the proposed 2023 budget, correcting the legal line to $2,000, which would bring the total to $12,027.
I, discussion?
Yeah, we have a motion?
We have a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any, any discussion?
I have a question for Jim in regards to things that may be coming in 2022, specific to office supplies. There was speak of getting a plotter, and I want to make sure that your office supplies budget line is adequate for things like Plotter Inc. and other items that you might be receiving this coming calendar year. Because the last thing you want...
Right at the moment, the, the number on the office supply line is adequate. Because you have the same AA as the planning board, when I took over out of last year's budget, I ordered extra envelopes, what, certain things, supplies that are expendable. That number, while it says 9.7 at the bottom, if you looked at it as of today, it's, there's probably 50 bucks left in it. It's, other than the large butter mailings, there's not a lot of day-to-day pay, you know, paper processing. Paper is supplied by the town. The printer is the planning board printer.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that...
Jim, how about that new piece of equipment that, that, the group that we're looking on to purchase?
That, that is coming with two rolls of paper and two ink cartridges, which should last for a good long time. If it doesn't, you'll be hearing me whining.
And that, that's, I just want to make sure that you're covered, because that's, to accept this is a long time.
There are certain things that, if I thought we could add, you could add to the budget, there are a couple of things that it'd be nice to have, like Adobe.
No, actually, though, couldn't, that shouldn't be on our budget. That, that should come out of the technical support that comes from the Comcast fees.
Except for the fact that that money has been going down very rapidly.
What about, maybe we could get it applied from the technology grants that Trish has been working on?
And you haven't brought that to Trish's attention?
Agreed to look into it, but that could, that only lasts for the life of the grant.
Okay.
So... I'm trying to, I'm trying to come up with a way that, because it would be on one computer...
Excuse me?
You know, my office computer, to share it between, you know, something like that between the two boards. And ZVA uses this size envelope, standard envelopes. Otherwise, their office supplies are fairly negligible.
Okay.
So I'm hoping by leaving that at 150, I believe a full year of Adobe is someplace around 450.
That annually?
Yes.
Why don't you look into, well, we could take that offline so we don't digress, but there's another program that I use that's nice, but I don't know fully what you're doing with it, so we can talk after and...
My primary need for it is when plans come in and they, we have a couple of engineers that insist on, you know, giving me access to a Dropbox, and I end up with a plan that is way too big to put on the website. I will admit to the board, my comfort level of cutting their files in half or quartering them. As a public entity, we have to be really careful on what we may do to somebody's document, whether it's in electronic format or paper. My comfort level of splitting up somebody's plan set, no. However, with the new piece of equipment, I can then take page one and two, scan them in, that's one file. Three and four, scan them in, that's another file. Because there's a maximum of number of meg that you can put up in an individual file on the town website. I also can't email anything that's massive. So now that, now that that piece of equipment is coming, I'm able to do away with, you know, needing Adobe, because they give me paper, I scan it. If the document is too big to be a single file, I can go, okay, the first 50 pages, the second 50 pages. That, there's no problem with their numbered pages. You look at, you know, document one, that's page one through 50, document two is page 50 through 100. The ZVA is covered, the planning board is covered. But until I get that, I've been having some problems lately with, you know, them just dropping, you know, saying, go to the Dropbox and pull it up. And I end up with a document that I can do nothing with. And I don't want to have to have people squinting at their screens, because not everybody has a 32-inch screen, including me.
Look into Bluebeam. I think it's a little bit more affordable, and for what you described, I think it's a lot more user-friendly, and it allows markup, color-coded markups. So essentially, we could do our markups digitally, kick it back to the applicant.
I'm hoping the new piece of equipment will take care, that's why I haven't actually mentioned the Adobe in a while, because if I do get the new piece of equipment and I can scan things, then I can share things more easily. And I can shift things from the computer out back to the laptop here and be able to, I'm sure you've seen on the planning board, I don't know if I've done it on the ZVA yet, where I share and, you know, when engineer is referring to a point, I can actually take the little cursor and circle it.
So you, you could project a plan on that screen?
Exactly, yes.
Because I think that, that has been one of the complaints of people in the audience.
Oh, definitely, yes.
When we talk about plans, that they, they can't see what we're talking about.
Right. I can, I can presently, I do, I do that for the planning board. I can also, I will also be able to do it for the ZVA, as long as I can shift plans from one computer to another.
Okay, I think we've discussed a budget enough. We've got a second. Jim, you want to do a roll call vote, please?
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvia?
Aye.
Ms. Reardon?
Aye.
Mr. Kozak?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next is the updated rules of procedure. Has everybody had a chance to review them?
Jim, this is what you sent out and had the highlights in, correct?
Excuse me?
You sent this digitally?
With the highlights?
This is just the paper copy?
Yeah.
Then, yes.
The, the copy that you received digitally is redline?
Yes.
The ones that you received in your board packet are just black and white?
Make a motion that we adopt the rules of procedure as presented with a few editorial changes. The first one being the adoption date is supposed to be July 12th, not July 1st.
It's...
I checked the minutes.
I know, but the, the new copy says September 7th.
No, no, I'm talking about the big, in, in bold, July 1st, 2021, it should be July 12th, 2021.
Oh.
And then the next line, it should be November 3rd, 2021.
Okay.
Add the vice chair's name to the, to the front page.
I did that on the...
And throughout the text to correct the, the amendment dates. They're all, they're all the question marks. Fix that.
Oh, sorry. I, I, I put in the right, I have the right date. And the copy that was posted.
The one that I have, that needs that editorial change, and also the header needs, the date on the header is, needs to be updated.
Got that, got that one too. That got posted. The only, only thing I will have to do is I will, at the end of the meeting, I will correct the two dates on the cover page.
I have a question about the, there's a, in section 12, in that big long paragraph about upon receipt, about the middle of the paragraph, upon receipt of, the printed copy says "in application", and in the, the one you sent us digitally, it said "upon receipt of a completed application".
The word "completed" was removed.
Okay.
Because only the ZVA can determine if the application is complete. I can't.
Okay. No, I just was wondering why there was a difference between the two.
Yeah.
We can't have, we can't determine a completed application after having received the completed application.
That kind of makes sense. I was just noting that there was a difference, that's all.
Very good.
Is there any further discuss, is it, was there a second?
Not yet.
I thought second.
Any further discussion? Ms. White?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Who moved and seconded, please?
I did.
Who seconded I moved?
Mr. Hamel, you seconded?
No, I, I moved. Mr. Sylvia seconded.
Jim, we do a roll call, please?
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvia?
Aye.
Ms. Reardon?
Aye.
And Mr. Kozak?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Next on the agenda is the updated fee schedule. Has everybody had a chance to look at it?
This now covers...
Yeah.
I think this is much better than it was.
One correction, I will let you know, if you look at the bottom of it.
8/7/22?
It says, it should say, "Total fee shall be calculated by the zoning board of adjustment administrative assistant", not the planning board.
Okay.
These are the exact same fees that are, that will be, hopefully being added to the planning board to cover our butter expenses.
Somebody want to make a motion that we adopt the fee schedule?
Make a motion that we adopt the fee schedule as presented effective August 7th, 2022.
Do we have a second?
This is Barbara, I'll second.
Barbara, thank you. Any further discussion?
With, with the one editorial change that, that Mr. Dyatt mentioned.
Actually, it was, as soon as I caught that, I ran downstairs and it's been posted with the correct language. You just didn't receive it. I'm sorry, I wasn't wasting paper.
Going forward, I would do a roll call vote, Jim.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvia?
Aye.
Ms. Reardon?
Aye.
Mr. Kozak?
Aye.
I will tomorrow take this and post it. That's another one of the new requirements with the House Bill 1661, is let this be posted and it will go on the website, the ZVA website.
Okay.
ASAP.
Well, I'd do a adjourn at 7:50.
I have an announcement. The NHMA's training, the lecture, law lecture series, the registration is now open, so that it's scheduled for October 15th. The fee is $70. I would strongly recommend, especially the new members, that they try to avail themselves of this training opportunity. And I would ask the administrative assistant to handle the registration of anybody who needs to register.
May I make a, may I make a statement? For the new members, they need to know that it comes out of the zoning board budget. They don't have to pay for it.
Yeah, that, that, that's basically why I said, go through the administrative assistant to do the registration, so that he, he handles it, it gets billed to the town, it's...
What, what's that date again?
It, it's October 15th.
I, I'm going on a hunting trip. Leaving the tents.
That's okay. There's, there's only enough in the training budget for three, maybe four members.
That's a Saturday?
Yeah.
Mr. Hamel has already read email that I won't be reading until tomorrow. Mr. Hamel, is it being offered virtually also?
Yeah, it is only virtually.
Oh, okay.
Virtual training.
Because that, that's one of the things that, because so many, so many of these courses are now virtual.
Yeah.
As far as I know, it's only...
So it doesn't affect our budget?
Well, no, but we, we have a line for travel.
Okay.
So we can piggyback, that we, we can actually, you know, wrap in. I do wish that they had told, because I, when I was doing the budget, the, the last law lecture series was only $55.
Yeah, this one, it's, it's 70 this, this year.
Yeah. May not sound like a lot, but when you only have 300 bucks, you know...
Maybe we should have reviewed the budget and increased that line item.
Well, no, because that, that's coming out of this year's budget, not next year's budget.
And I mean, I think one of the things is this year, especially where we have so many new members, that, that it's really important, it's very important for the new members. I mean, the... It's very important for the new members. I mean, the.
Now, I will do like I did last year. Last year, there were four possible choices. Last year, I did the two ZBAs and one planning board. This year, I'll probably flip it and I'll portion the training costs to the two different.
I won't be here around October 15th.
Okay. Well, Ms. Reardon may wish to attend. I know Mr. Hamel enjoys attending.
Though, if budget constraints, I mean, because I looked at the agenda and it looks like it's going to be very important for new people. But it may not be horribly interesting for, for me, who's gone to them for so long.
That makes sense. By the way, I will also remind, let people know that there's a, in House Bill 1661, there is a recommendation, maybe a requirement, that people take a test that's issued by, Mr. Ham, Mr. Hamel passed his, his test.
Basically, the, the law required OPD, the Office of Planning and Development, to develop a test based upon the the, the, the training that they were, that they needed to develop. They did, it does not have a requirement for board members to take the test. But I chose to take the test and, 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 and sent Jim my, my certificate that I passed.
I have also taken the test and got 30 out of 30.
But, but again, that, that is a, you know, a valuable opportunity, especially for new people.
Right. Especially if you take the one that has no, you can take it, there are two ways you can take it. You can either put in your email address, in which case you get a certificate when it's, when you've passed it. Or you can take it without putting in your email address. And they'll still tell you which ones you got wrong, but you then know, okay, I'm not too bad in these areas. Okay, I need to read a little bit more on this. I actually missed two questions on the planning board one because they were about historic district commissions. I couldn't tell you the first thing about historic, well, I could tell you a few things about historic district commissions, but the questions that they asked were really, I just looked at it and you couldn't even guess.
So what you're saying is if we want to go to this, we sent Jim an email or something and he signs us up for it?
Yes.
And then?
Well, you, you probably want to go to NHNA's website so that you can see the agenda. Because there will be choices of which section you want to attend. I mean, I, I assume that you'll want to attend ZBA 101.
Is that what it's called?
Yes.
That one sounds good to me.
Is that the $70 one, ZBA 101?
Well, that's half a day. You get to do something else besides that, yeah.
Oh, okay. So there's different sessions or?
Right. And so you may want to look at which session so that you can tell Jim which sessions you're going to attend. Because he probably has to put that in when he, when you.
When I register you, I have to say which ones.
Okay, so the website has.
The whole agenda of everything that's being offered.
And so what is the title of the whole agenda? Is it, is it ZBA 101?
No, no, it is the Law Lecture Conference.
Is that what it's called?
Yeah.
So make sure I look at the right one.
They, they keep changing the name.
Right, but it, it's Land Use Law Something.
Okay, Land Use Law Something.
I will.
Okay.
I'm assuming I have the same, got the same email. I just didn't get a chance to read it tonight.
When did you get that email from them?
Actually, I, I got it because I got this, I'm on Newslink or whatever, so I, I get those emails. And I also get Town and Country in that, Town and County or whatever that magazine is.
Yeah, because I get the NHMA ones, but I don't see that. Oh, yeah, October 50th, Land Use Law Virtual Conference.
There you go.
It's right there.
Land Use Law Virtual.
I can forward you the email if you'd like, that has the.
I can type that in.
Okay.
Thank you anyway.
No problem. Land Use Law Virtual Conference. It was all the way down the bottom.
Are we all set?
Sorry.
Adjourned at 7:55 PM.